The time is now six thirty-three on Wednesday, February twelfth. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the village board. And if we could stand for the...
For the ladies to rely on the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have Pastor Evan from the Methodist Church on the east of town that's going to provide us with the identification.
Do you pray with me? Father, we thank you and praise you for giving us yet another day to honor you and to love our fellow man. We pause now to humble ourselves and recognize that all power and wisdom and authority come from you. We thank you for blessing our country and our community in so many ways. And we ask you to continue to do that as we would rightly follow after you. We pray for these elected officials, appointed officials, our firemen, our police, our public works workers. We ask a blessing and protection to be upon them and upon their family. And Lord, right now, as we come to this time to do business, where we ask, as your word says, for wisdom. We ask for wisdom for each one as we conduct the business of this meeting. Lord, that you would give us wisdom to rightly guide our community, to be a place that honors you, that supports the family, and, Lord, just becomes a greater community for all the people that are involved. We ask all of this in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Trustee Gonzalez, Alice.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Holston.
Here.
Horn.
Here.
Hatt.
Here.
And Raisik.
Here.
At this time, we have open to the public agenda items only. Please hold your comments for three minutes, come to the podium, give your name and address the speaker. The Packers. Under the consent agenda, I do want to address, I think it's item number one, before we vote to approve the consent agenda, I just want to bring it up. There was a... The incorrect copy of the minutes was put in your packets. There is a slight... It was almost the same, but there is a discrepancy regarding one item that was corrected, and the new copy is in front of you. You can either approve that, or we can have it withheld and wait to approve those minutes till the following meeting if you so desire. I don't know if you've had a chance to review it, but I just want to make sure everybody has a chance to confirm their correct information. All right, so I'll give you a few minutes if you'd like, just to review that.
What was the correction?
It was, I believe, had to do with roll call primarily, is where the difference was. We marked somebody absent, and they were present.
There was actually a glitch in transferring files to a computer, and what got printed wasn't the actual minutes from the twenty-second in its entirety, and with roll call, that got transferred to a previous session, and trustee Holston was shown as absent, but it's one of the nads, basically, just rhetoric.
It is a rhetoric, well, show I was here then.
Yes, sir. As you are today, sir.
I would move we accept the consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
Okay.
Yes, presented.
All right.
I actually would like item six removed from the consent agenda.
Down from... Anything else to be removed? I'm waiting for a second.
Second.
Okay. Trustee Pop, trustee Holston, with item six removed. Roll call, please.
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Hatt.
Yes.
Raisik.
Yes.
And Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Okay, just wanted to discuss the one item on... So it would be...
F-six.
F-six on page... Two on page three. Nearly halfway down, there's a payment for Division eighty-four for thirty-six hundred dollars.
Okay.
And I know with Division eighty-four, and that's to pay our website designer...
Correct.
...to fulfill the agreed-upon amount. Although I would like to say, and I know this is after the fact, and the check has already been cut, that his fulfillment of what the website has not done, and I don't think he should have been paid, especially in his entirety, until the deliverables are, you know, looked at and approved. So I know, this is in hindsight now, but I would just like it noted, we would not, you know, DJ would buy salt. We would not give the salt guy payment until we had a truckload of salt delivered. So I really think this should have been withheld, or as, you know, billed to us, and, you know, somewhere stated that the rest of your payment would be paid upon completion and approval.
Understood. Bill enough.
And a recourse for that is, and now he's been paid in full, the website is obviously not completed, approved, and/or up and running, so he has absolutely no, you know, probable cause or way to help us, or to make sure that it's done in time and in time.
I'm going to defer to Barbara Ray. I know you've been in conversation with the gentleman from Division forty-four that had been presented to the board at the special meeting two weeks ago, was it?
Well, and that I understand, and we all have, and as you know that I met with him and Arv yesterday.
Right. And that was subsequent to him being paid, so he's continued to provide services even though... Okay, I understand what you're saying, but he's not cutting us off now that he's been paid. Am I correct? I mean, you see...
I'm hoping that's the case, but my point being, this download should not have been paid until this board and our village looked at, approved, and we launched that website.
Okay. Okay. My understanding was, the site was completed as far as the development side of it goes. What we were waiting for was content which was deliverable by our own staff.
My conversations had with Arv and Justin, and you were involved in every one of those conversations as well. That's not, and we don't have a contract from him to state that, okay, I will get my payment in full when it's done. And so that I want this, you know, this is something that we learn from. We need a safeguard for policing ourselves on how this is done. And I've had a nice conversation with Darryl yesterday, and offered some ideas. He offered some idea in how we can correct this from ever happening.
So basically, going forward, because, you know, as you indicated, learning from what we're going through, a recommendation would be that a percentage of the balance would be retained until such time as certain conditions were met?
For not only something like this, but for all of our bills, and I'm going to draw back on my experience with the school board, there was, prior to any cuts or checks being cut, we had the entire check listing, and the school board approved the checks before they were sent out the next day after the school board, and I think we can learn from that, too. Say, okay, all these checks are cut, and after our board meeting tonight, when we approve them, they get sent out.
Okay.
And so that's...
And I know that our new finance director has been doing a phenomenal job. We've had discussions as recently as this morning related to better policies when it comes in practices. We are learning.
And that's why I had that conversation with you yesterday, because I think we definitely need to protect ourselves.
Absolutely. Agreed. Okay.
Question. These additional checks to Tech Three consulting group, are they related to the same thing?
No, Tech Three is the cut, the engineering firm.
Okay. Thank you.
If there's one other item on there, then this is just something, too, that I don't know if anybody realizes, too, that the village was charged two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars for a Forest South Animal Hospital, and that's because we don't have an animal control officer. So if anybody calls in about a stray animal or a pickup or something, this is what the village gets charged from Forest South to collect the animal and then house it until adoptability or the owner is found. So that's something just for us to be aware of. That's all. Sorry. Thank you.
Thomas, good points. If I could, chief, help me, help the rest of the board understand.
If the black cell is an animal, then we drop them off, and if they're adoptable, they adopt them out. If they're not, then five days for estradiation, seven days if it has tags, and if they fail to respond.
Two-hundred-and-seventy-five, we had a lot of animals.
Yes, we did.
And chief, do we have other options available to us?
That was the cheapest at the time, and it remains the cheapest for the rest of the year.
If I might ask, just as a matter of fiscal responsibility, could you able to look into seeing if there's other options again that might be...
Sure.
...more cost-effective?
Absolutely.
And if there's a similarity between local versus whatever, these vendors, for any case, as much close to home as possible. So, and I know they're just down the street as well. Any other discussion pertaining to item number six on the consent agenda? Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve item number six on the consent agenda. The bills.
Still moved?
Okay.
Okay, Holston, Raisik. Roll call, please.
Trustee Holston.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Hatt.
Yes.
Raisik.
Yes.
Gonzalez. And Gray.
Yes.
And we have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda since F-six was approved.
Consent agenda was approved last F-six.
We never took a vote on that.
Did we not do a roll call on that?
No, we had a motion and a second.
I'm sorry, let's go back to do that if we can. Consent agenda without six, just to make sure we had it correctly, roll call.
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Hatt.
Yes.
Raisik.
Yes.
And Gonzalez.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. NG number H, clerk's report.
Your honor, I'm not sure where we're going, if I need a motion, but it does to reappoint Deputy Powell as deputy clerk for the term that she was eligible for. She does a magnificent job, and without question, she should be deputy clerk.
And do you want me to just delve in this for a minute? We've had some employment transitions and such going on recently, and it came to our attention that after there was myself being in office, the new clerk in office, there were some department heads or other appointments that had not been resolidified, and after talking to legal counsel and everything else, he felt it was relevant that we take the time to formalize our respect for the individuals that are in those positions, to make sure that their support staff, in some cases, recognize what we recognize as the relevant talent, as the officials in those capacities, representing our best interests as a community. So I concur with Clerk Hazier. Sometimes you don't know what you inherit, you know, when you're walking into a situation, but Deputy Clerk Powell has been phenomenal, above and beyond, helping out with the starting up of the police commission, planning and zoning, and at times even, you know, volunteer for a number of activities that I just, that's all the above and beyond stuff. So I would entertain a motion to approve the clerk's recommendation for the reappointment of Michelle Powell as the deputy clerk.
I'll second that.
I'm looking for a first.
Oh, I'll first it then.
Horn, Horn and Gonzalez. All right.
Trustee Horn.
Yes.
Hatt.
Yes.
Raisik.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
And Holston.
Yes.
Okay. Did you have something about the... Okay. I'll defer to the chief. Anything else for you, sir?
No, same to my end.
Okay. Under the mayor's agenda item I, this time, I would have the same vein of thought there. I would seek an approval of the board for the reappointment of the superintendent of Public Works. I will say that Mr. Corzal has been a huge asset. I won't quite say that he works miracles, but he's pretty impressive with what he's able to accomplish. I'm very impressed with the short time that he's been here, and the leadership that he's shown, enthusiasm that he gives out of his support staff, very pleased with the work that he's done, and I think it's important for not only the support staff, but the general public to recognize what we recognize. And I would be very appreciative if the board would also recognize the same thing, and I'm looking for a motion to approve my recommendation for the superintendent of Public Works is DJ Corzal. Pop, and then Holston. Roll call, please.
Trustee Pop.
Yes.
Raisik.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
And Horn.
Yes.
There's a struggle there because of the Packers thing, I know, but... Next item is a reappointment of our place, chief. It's always interesting when you bring people in, the speculations and the rumors that go around a small town like ours, and I've got to tell you, the chief has a great rapport with his staff, and he is a very impressive individual when you think about his... I just like his insight into constitutionality and stuff. It's just really impressive when, some of the things I've heard about him in the past, and I don't know all the details, but all again, a great guy. I know there was this incident a while back where there was somebody trying to push literature and golf fist or something like that, and he started citing, you know, issues of the Constitution. It's like, wow, that's impressive, you know? This guy actually understands the Constitution. How many people have been sworn to uphold the state and federal Constitution, and yet, since age three, have they read it? You know, that's a, you know, so, this kind of scary thought, but I think the chief is doing a phenomenal job, and I think it's important for his support staff to recognize what we recognize in him. There's been some things I've asked him for, some reports, some investigation on some things, and he's been quick to respond and get his officers involved in looking into situations, whether it be traffic studies or different things like that. And frankly, when we got an effective, qualified support staff like this, like departments, it can defer the need for us to go out to some engineering firms or things like that, even to do some simple things. Well, they're not simple, but they're important. So, and I do want to mention as well, it's not often that, you know, DJ, he's quick to be involved, working all seems like unlimited hours for the village, and that needs to be recognized, the chief as well. He's been doing a self-defense class for the women, and says, I'm doing this, don't pay me, I'm doing this because I care about the safety, I care about the community. And that's really, in my opinion, that's the kind of stuff, when you see these things, he's, he and one of the sergeants are involved in a process of being involved and doing a kickstarting the special, it's torch run. Polar plunge and things like that, and, you know, all with the intent, and I don't want to steal his thunder, but, I mean, it's pretty impressive when you see the number of people that get involved of our employment that aren't just doing it for the paycheck, they're doing it because they really care about our community. They really care about the people we're trying to serve. And I would really appreciate the board's support in making a motion to approve my recommendation for the reappointment of the police chief is John Suker.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, Gonzalez, and then Raisik. Roll call, please.
Trustee Raisik.
Yes.
Gonzalez. Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
And Hatt.
Yes.
At this time, I have nothing up for my agenda, and I'm going to defer to the attorney's report.
Thank you, mayor. The first item for the board's consideration is an ordinance, amending ordinance fifteen thirty-nine regarding permit review fees, that we talked about the last meeting. The board wants them thirty to forty dollars based on recommendation of staff. It's up before the board for their review and approval.
Is there anybody a chance to review that? This is all reference to the recommendations were made by Jim Smith, our building department manager.
Are you open for a motion?
I am. Oh, we need orders of it, yes. Is that a first for Gonzalez, second a pop? No, that's not what I meant.
That'll be ordinance sixteen seventy-six.
So that actually takes place at fifteen thirty-nine as entirely, or is it meant that one? And then is that one?
Fifteen thirty-nine, three extends regarding each...
Understood.
...all of the ones that one's...
Okay. Roll call, next one.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Hatt.
Yes.
And Raisik.
Yeah.
Thank you, mayor. The next item is discussion regarding Greylar Corporation. Basically, back in two thousand and four, we, Greylar built the building in TIF number three. We signed a revolver note to the company for three-hundred thousand dollars. I believe there's been some ongoing discussions with them, with staff pertaining to the insulation of a water line to serve them water. Did receive a letter from Greylar's council indicating he believes interest is due on the note, which is customary, but it's when the interest is payable. What I would like to do is start some discussions with the council for Greylar, Mr. Brown. I can give copies of this letter to the board for their review. Just received this about a week to ten days ago. I have to talk with staff. I'm not sure who was involved in discussions at that point in time about running a water line out there. I think something transpired where we got this letter, so I got to check it before I go further than Mr. Brown, because I don't want to put my...
Superintendent Corzal, a person of...
And then, the water line would serve us now in Greylar, but I think there's other companies out there.
Only one, two there.
Okay. So I'd like to get some more information from them, then talk to Mr. Brown. Greylar's been out there for, well, two thousand and five. They have a couple tenants out there. I know, I believe, Chief Nealon's concerned about some water-related issues out there. So once I have an opportunity to get further discussion and further information, I'll bring it back to the board. But I want to at least tell Mr. Brown and his council from Mr. Greylar that we're looking into it, we'll take it seriously. They have received their payment. Their note was three-hundred thousand dollars. Their annual payment, I believe, we agreed to pay eighty percent, which comes up to about, on their tax bill, roughly eighteen thousand dollars per year. But I will discuss this with Mr. Brown after I talk to our staff.
And I do want to mention on that, if we can, that's a time sensitive nature, so hopefully we'll have this ready for a presentation at the next board meeting. The reason why it's time sensitive is because the fire department was prepared to give them a red tag, basically, and not allow them to continue use of that facility. We want to do everything we can to work with our businesses to make sure that, you know, if they're working with us, we're working with them, to make sure that they can continue operation with what they're trying to accomplish. And so hopefully, in the next few days, we'll have an opportunity to resolve this matter and find something that's mutually advantageous to present back to the board. It's either paid now or paid later kind of a situation for them or for us. We've just got to get to a win-win on that so we can get the project done. Chief Nealon is hoping that whatever the approval is, that we can get a commitment, a loose commitment to having to deploy that by midsummer of some sort, and that would be an infrastructure thing for us as well, so...
I have one question.
Yeah.
How big's that building, Major?
Oh, open it up. I believe it's over ten thousand.
General, do you know?
I know it's for fire suppression.
Is it sprinkled?
Yeah, for a sprinkler system, yes.
Does it bring the fire?
This was brought to the board and approved pending Greylar having to reimburse some of it, and I believe that's what the discrepancy is. This was for fire suppression purposes, and instead of them putting a booster pump in and being a holding tank, their portion of what that would have cost was going to be given to the village to run the sewer and make and connect it down to Sunrise, down to North Hill, so, and it was already presented up at the board.
Yeah. Basically, the agreement had already reached. The problem was, is now Greylar's expecting, just so you guys know, the Greylar's expecting the twenty-four thousand that was agreed to. They're thinking that they don't have to pay that upfront, that should come out of the interest that they're due out of the TIF funds, and that's where there has... It doesn't read quite that way, so the attorneys are going to actually have to talk legal with their legal to make sure they understand it.
And as the mayor indicated, there's room for negotiation, because there is, Darryl was good enough along with Michelle to give me how much TIF balance monies are in that account in TIF number three, and it's, there's monies in there for infrastructure, and eventually, I think, we should talk about that.
Sure.
Those monies are allocated for TIF infrastructure improvements, and there's adequate money, but let me talk to Mr. Brown, I'll talk to DJ and everybody.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. And the last item I have for the board's consideration, talking about TIFs, we received a request from O'Keefe Lines and Hines, a law firm from downtown. They represent Chicago Metro, who owns property at two fifty-seven, seven, seven South Cleveland and two fifty-nine, seventy-five South Cleveland. We agreed to reimburse them of the TIF account. I believe it was ninety percent, until I verify tomorrow. Their total tax bill for last year was six-hundred-one-thousand-eight-hundred-seventy dollars. They're asking for reimbursement of five-hundred-forty-six-eight-hundred-thirty dollars. This has not come out of the village corporate fund, this is the TIF that we just talked about. Everything's online, we paid them for the last, I'll say probably ten years, so they're asking for reimbursement. A little late. Most of them run it right after thirty days, usually in the fall, so, but this legitimate, so we need a motion to approve authorization of payment to Metro Chicago Industrial Acquisition Corporation.
Make a motion to that.
Second. Discussion. Can you give me that number again, the payout?
I believe trustee Horn is five forty-six-eight-thirty. The total tax bill was six-oh-one-eight-seventy. I'll take ninety percent of that, which I'll verify with Darryl. I think it's five forty-six-eight-thirty.
Any more discussion on that? And of course, this will be pending final confirmation with Darryl. With Darryl. With Darryl, Mr. Finisterre.
Trustee Holston, would you pass that?
Okay. Any more discussion, or are we ready for a roll call?
I'm sorry, I think that thing was pretty hard.
No, no, Greylar had no...
I'm sorry, that's right, S.J. three. Okay. So you're ready for a roll call?
I am, please.
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Hatt.
Yes.
Raisik.
Yes.
And Gonzalez.
Yes.
Just on hand, mayor.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go into the admissions report. I want to make sure we address the department heads as well in this section. I know that you guys have a piece of paper right here from Public Works. Mr. Corzal, would you mind addressing the board pertaining to the irrelevance of this document?
Good evening, board. You will find, was that in your packet, a quote from John Deere from Shore Home and Auto in regards to a, what looks like a lawnmower, tractor lawnmower, a cage, hard cab, and snowblower deck. Because of the impact of this year's snowfall, our equipment that was about circa nineteen ninety-four has since blown up. We use this equipment to clean the sidewalks in front of the village hall here for the safe route to schools, all the way down to the school at Creek, all right, Moni Elementary, and on our bridges and in front of our police stations for public access. This was going to be a planned purchase for next year. This was going to be a planned purchase for next year. This piece of equipment will actually be taking the place of two different pieces of equipment that are both on their last legs. We've sunk expensive dollars in over the last couple of years in maintaining this equipment, and we have not replaced it since then. So now that we've come into an issue where the motor is actually blown up on this John Deere circa nineteen ninety-four, we want to get into a newer piece of equipment where we can also use it to maintain lawns in the summertime. That'll be a dual-purpose snow thrower in the wintertime with a hard cab and heater, so the guys aren't out there freezing with all the sidewalks that we have to maintain. And then we'll remove that cab, put in the grass, and then we'll maintain our public properties, our grass that we have throughout the municipality. Again, I was gonna use it in two different line items, because it's used for our sidewalks and parks, and also through our road bridge to maintain our grasses and so on and so forth. So the budget total that was here is going to be allocated to two different departments, so it's not that big of a hit. But because of the uncertainty of the season and what's left of it, I'm requesting that we get this machinery sooner and then make up the appropriation for the next fiscal budget. We do have monies available in the line, in the appropriation for these now. It just was not planned currently. I was hoping to be able to get this in next year, and we fell a few months short of that due to the impact of the snow. We'll take any questions if anybody has them. Just so that you are aware, this quote is below state bid pricing for all of this equipment. John Deere is very aggressive in trying to corner the municipal market, so they, they give pretty good deals when it comes to this equipment. And its longevity is proven. Like I said, we've had equipment from the nineties that are now, just now, kind of blowing up, air-cooled equipment. This will be liquid cooled, so we should get a longer life out of it.
We need a motion, is that with more discussion?
No. We got a discussion now, that's one.
David, I know John Deere is a reputable company, there's no doubt about that. Did you get other bids on equipment similar to it or?
Didn't get similar to this, because I'm using it as a dual-purpose equipment, and we have accounts set up through John Deere, and that's what ninety-five percent of our equipment is when it comes to the grass cutting. So we maintain parts knowledge with our staff and our mechanical maintenance department, so that we don't have to send these out to a proprietary Husqvarna or any of that other, you know, keep extra parts and materials or training in that, since we've had this brand and it's been a proven brand. I don't want to reach out into the unknown and not know what kind of reliability I'll be out of it. So we stuck with this only because of the reliability, and they've been proven.
The other question I would add, it's my last question, is what type of warranties do they have on that?
This unit actually comes with a two-year warranty for parts and materials. And Shorewood Home and Auto does go above and beyond and has proven that whenever we've had issues picking up the equipment for us with their flatbed trailer, bringing it in, giving us loan equipment if we needed it. They also supplied, not that it's relevant, but they supplied material for us during Paw Fest, the gator that we drove around, was donated by them. They've been really good to the village in retrospect, to being able to take care of us when we needed it.
Thank you.
David, what would be the cost of repairing the existing equipment?
The existing equipment for an engine, and that is from John Deere, is twenty-seven hundred dollars for a short block, and we would have to transfer over whatever parts to make that work. I did find an aftermarket company that makes that engine for twenty-nine hundred dollars, but they only give us about a thirty-day warranty on that rebuilt, reman motor, so I'm not sold on that. That was an avenue that I was going to try to look into, but because of the other components that we've already had to repair on this particular unit, not just pertaining to the engine this year alone, we do not have a mower deck for this unit. This unit is actually going to be replacing two different units that I have right now. One as a grass cutter that's exceeded its life, and then now the snow thrower. So we would park this unit all spring, summer, fall, and only bring it out in the wintertime because we had no mower deck. If I wanted to price a mower deck and get it to work, because of the size of the unit, I would only get like a, I believe it was a fifty-four inch deck, and I'm actually upscaling it to a sixty-inch deck to be able to be a little more efficient when we cut grass. The thought behind it was to donate the lawnmower that we have to possibly the parks for baseball or football, if they wanted to maintain grass when they're out there, and they would have a spare mower that's on its last leg, but could do some of the light-duty work and still maintain it on their own if they needed it. But again, it's replacing two units, so we're kind of getting dual purposes out of this. We'll, it'll be able to reset the life on what we do as far as maintaining our grasses and maintaining our sidewalks.
You said replacing it anyway in a couple months, did you mean on this year's budget, so you could get the mower deck and everything?
I'm requesting if we can do it early, only because of the unknowns with the weather, and we have not been able to maintain the sidewalk since the last couple-inch snowfall that we had over the last weekend, because it blew up. It was going to be an appropriation for the next fiscal budget, but because it blew up, it's kind of put us in an emergency state to be able to take care of the safe route to school and our bridges. As you know, we have two, we have two bridges in town that residents rely on getting across the, what we call the cut, the railroad tracks, and we maintain that so that residents can safely pass down Court Street and down Main Street to get across through there. We maintain those as well. So now that that equipment's gone, it's kind of hindered us to be able to take care of that, and I would like to keep that, that practice going for the rest of the season.
Question was, a couple months, did you mean a couple months on this budget or a couple months later on the next budget? That was my only question, so thanks for answering that.
Okay.
My next question would be for Daryl then. Daryl, from a budgetary point of view, this year, where would you place that?
Oh, I don't know.
Any particular line?
If I can defer that. As I had stated, trustee Holston, this was actually going to get split up, because I would be using it for two different purposes.
I understand.
O one twenty-two account and then the O two O O account. So it'll be kind of a dual purpose.
So you'll be putting that in there this year, then?
Correct. And we still have monies in the appropriations for that.
Just to clarify with the consent on this, this is, this is something we're asking for a vote for now. We reaffirm this vote at the next meeting, simply as formality, because it wasn't, in the packet, it wasn't on the agenda, but this is something to happen. In the last, you know, couple days, we can have a chance to actually incorporate it in the packet. So with the board's approval, Superintendent Kurzell could contact Shorewood, Home and Auto, and have them proceed with the acquisition of, you know, ordering everything necessary to get it available to us. And we've just had it on the agenda for the next meeting to reaffirm that vote. So I'll undertake a motion to approve, unless there's any more discussion that you guys want.
The only concern I have is twenty thousand dollars is still a lot of money to spend without getting a second bid. And I know they've been a good vendor, but are we being fair to people who might want to bid on this? Do we have time to bid that, I'm asking you?
Well, this is actually below government spec bid.
I understand.
With it being a proprietary John Deere. If I went to another John Deere dealer, these would be the exact same prices. And this is the preferred equipment that we do based on what I had said before, parts knowledge in my department back there to repair and maintenance, and because we've had a good rapport with these vendors and doing above and beyond during warranty work, I don't believe we will get any additional discounts on any of these prices here. In fact, I can guarantee we're not gonna get any other additional discounts on these John Deere products, because John Deere wants to corner the market as far as municipalities go. So when we check with other municipalities, they all carry John Deere equipment because of their commercial line. And these are commercial products, these aren't residential used products, these are commercial.
Superintendent Kurzell, if I could just bring the point, I had gone out to Shorewood with you just to review the products. Obviously, I like Polaris, but I'm not driving it, you are, so.
You're a little flashier, Polaris.
But nonetheless, I was very interested to see that while we were there, looking in their service department and everything else, they had Chicago Park District and others routinely buy and have their equipment serviced at Shorewood or Home and Auto. So they apparently have, I'm gonna say apparently, from my perspective as a casual observer, they have done an effective job in the nearby vicinity of being a regional supplier at the best price for government purchases. And that's just based on what I saw firsthand, not based on, you know, all the way down to Peoria or some other place to try to get a price on that stuff.
In fact, while we were there touring equipment, one of the landscapers was picking up a unit that was pretty similar to this and ordering, I think, two more of them, because it's commercial proven, and he actually demonstrated his unit, and it kind of changed my direction, my thought as to how I was gonna do, I was gonna be frugal and not get some of the options that this one has, but then I realized the necessity for some of the options. So as you see, it's four-wheel drive. On this one, our last one was a two-wheel drive, and we had a little chains on the back. If anybody, residents have seen us with our part-time staff, getting our snow thrower backup off of the bridge when it falls off because of ice or conditions, this will be a lot safer as far as the unit goes. And we went with a four-wheel steer due to the safe route to school sidewalks, having a bunch of jogs in it around the electrical poles towards the south end. It'll help us in the grass cutting with the zero-turn capability to be able to be a little more efficient, save some time when we're actually manicuring and maintaining our lawns. So although I was trying to save some tax dollars, I basically saw the relevance in the labor time and the man-hours that I would save over the term of the life of this equipment to be more valuable to get the equipment this way.
I'm not questioning your decision in terms of what sign or the additional add-ons, I just wonder how much effort it would take to get a couple additional quotes, so that if somebody says, are you being fair, are you getting other quotes? We can say, yes, we are.
I could do that, it will delay our process here a little bit, but I will get John Deere quotes.
How long? You would just get John Deere, that what you're saying?
Correct.
You're not understanding any other brand?
Not interested. Only for the reasons I said, because of our knowledge and our staff back there, the reliability we have with John Deere, and because of the commercial reputation that John Deere has, they're built to last. Like I said, I'm replacing a nineteen ninety-four snow blower that was air-cooled, and I'm replacing a ninety-seven grass cutter, ninety-eight grass cutter that's now on its last leg, so.
David, I'm torn a little bit in the respect of what trustee Holston is saying. I, I'm ready to vote yes for this, let me say that first, okay? But I think policy-wise, you should come to us with three prices, so that the public realizes we're watching our money.
Understood.
And I understand your comment, and I'd love to see you come back with higher numbers, but don't go around looking for higher numbers, but.
No, and I would never do that, as you know, I've brought anything to the board and have never, there's a, there's a reason why if I was gonna go through this and get this equipment that I'm presenting, this John Deere, it's what we want in our department, they're proven, and they're second to none when it comes to that stuff. They have other lines of equipment, as the mayor had alluded to, when we went there and looked at it, but John Deere specializes in these particular pieces of equipment that we're trying to get, whereas Polaris, I believe they were just cornering the market on ATVs or four-wheelers, so they got.
I can actually mentally relate this as a minor emergency, because I noticed just we're doing the sidewalk, and I noticed that it wasn't done. I said, uh-oh, what's going on there? You know, so.
So what's important if we do it?
And I agree with what the concerns are. I know we had a situation arise a while back pertaining to something else, and a similar issue was brought regarding getting prices on some, I think, doors or locks or something like that.
Correct.
And bottom line is, we reconfirmed, but it delayed the process by a matter of two or three weeks.
Because these prices are below state bid and they're at a government pricing, they've pretty much done the bidding to get the cheapest price. So the only reason why I would present one quote is because they're below a state bid at a municipal quote level. You can't go in there as a resident and get these prices that are stated in here, so.
But I understand what they're saying as well.
Understood.
So here's, here's a question. I'll address trustee Holston as well as trustee Pop for bringing it up, but the, because of the time sensitiveness of not knowing the weather conditions and what they're gonna bring for us and everything else, yet being the financial responsibility factor, I would like to know, could you, first thing tomorrow, seek prices on these specified items, identify three, four, or five, whatever, other locations that are capable of selling the Deere equipment? And at the very latest, and I'm saying, to an extent, not to exceed what we have here, but if you find out by the end of day Friday, as an example, that nobody else can do better than this, is that a reasonable way to address that? Because we don't want to just have this, take a month extra or something like that. And it only took these guys, how long did you give your price, DJ?
We were there and got this price, I believe, the next day. They started coming in, once they identified.
Since you know exactly what you're applying, you can actually stipulate department numbers or whatever to whoever you're talking to.
I can do it identical. What you won't see on here is, I believe they were gonna put all these attachments and actually build this unit for us for free, and weren't gonna charge us any assembly to do any of this. It was gonna be part of their deal because of, so that's maybe where if another vendor that we don't typically use, that may inflate that price a little bit, that would be the only thing I could think of.
And I know you're concerned about timely response, but as well as.
Yeah, this wasn't gonna be brought tonight, but because of the urgency of it, the mayor had kind of recommended that we get this to you guys for a general consent on this, and because I've been fielding a few phone calls with some residents, as you know, because of the snowfall tolls we've had this year, pushing back corners with the plow trucks, the V plows, we have covered up a few bus stops for the kids, and we were actually going out and using this piece of equipment to open up all the bus stop corners, so that kids could safely stand on the corner of the sidewalk for the residents that don't take care of their sidewalks versus, you know, the residents that do. And we were actually getting a list from the school and trying to help out with the community, because we just had an excessive amount of snow. I fielded a few phone calls yesterday pertaining to, could you please come out and do this? And had to tell them, you know, if it's three feet high, I can send a guy with a shovel. But when you start getting into the wind chills that we had and the weather, it becomes a concern for hypothermia with the guys being out there for a long time and shoveling. So that was the only reason why we brought up the urgency of this and kind of rethought it. But I can more than, more than definitely get this, some other quotes from some of the other vendors, just to see what they'll, if you'd like, that's it.
I have no, no doubt that this is a good price, and I certainly don't have a disagreement with the, with the accessories we're talking about. I guess, being an old German, you know, we're looking at, do we spend twenty-seven hundred dollars to repair a piece of equipment? Or do we go where we're not budgeted, we're not budgeted at this point for new equipment? Do we go out and spend twenty thousand dollars for new equipment that we don't even have other options on, other than, well, we've always used them for twenty years, so therefore we should make the change? And I'm not saying we should or shouldn't do that, but I think we have to, we have to consider that.
True. Both good points. And I'm looking to the board for recognition on how you want to proceed, because I don't want to, I don't want all the horse guys going out and getting hurt or injured or whatever.
We don't, we don't.
And we don't have currently.
This was gonna be on the next appropriation, because again, like I said, we're gonna be replacing a grass cutting unit, so the delays are as such, we're down a piece of equipment. I could almost certainly spend three thousand plus whatever labor it takes my guy to put in there to put this mower back together. But the one that we currently have, it has its issues already that we've tried to repair. And again, it doesn't have a mower deck, that still leaves us avoid in cutting our grass in the springtime when, when and if the snow ever thaws. So not the premise, pay me now, pay me later, it's gonna happen. It's just the urgency has moved this up just sooner, because we lost this piece of equipment sooner than I was anticipating.
Now let me add my two cents here. So the next appropriation would be main one, correct?
Correct.
So we have approximately two and a half months, we're moving this, this up. Very good indication we'll have another snowfall, based on.
Before, right?
Before, based on what we've. Before, based on what we've had this winter. This is, I think it's an urgent need, replacing 20-year-old and 15-year-old equipment respectively. John Deere's a good brand, lasts a long time. I'm sure you'll use this in 20 years. I think we should vote on it now.
Yeah, I was gonna ask if we could call for the question.
You have to, I wonder if it's in a motion.
I would make a motion if we, you don't need to put this, but I have to say this based on the urgency of this.
Hold on just a second, I'm sorry.
Just a consensus.
We can't make a motion.
Well, we can take a consensus, but go ahead and say the way you want to, Jeff.
That's not gonna allow them to purchase it.
No, it will. It will. We'll have to reaffirm the vote officially at the next meeting.
I would make a motion if we purchased a John Deere, what's the number of it, or whatever.
You can use the old idea on the upper.
First page.
A John Deere Signature Series X739, four-wheel steer, four-wheel drive tractor.
Okay.
And it's associated parts totaling $19,554.72.
I'll second that.
Yeah, point of clarification. Where?
I think Trustee Pop would be a good indication or good idea to put in a motion due to the emergency situation.
Okay, that's why.
Justification.
Absolutely.
And just to responsibly address the concerns brought forth regarding the pricing.
I still will follow through with that.
Okay.
And if for some reason Sherwood Home and Auto makes me eat a little crow, I'll admit to it if we find a cheaper price and I'll make sure they adjust accordingly.
I'm sure of the case maybe this way. So we have a motion?
We all need a consensus.
I know, okay, so is there, do I have any?
Consensus, we'll proceed with the transition, which will be reaffirmed.
Yes, stipulated. Okay. Just, I'll, we'll just take a simple roll call, I guess, for the consensus. Go ahead.
Trustee Holston?
No.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
And Gray?
Yes.
Thank you, board.
Okay.
As Trustee Gonzalez told you, we're working on the website. I know that this is something that you've been waiting quite a while for. The goal is to get it done within the next 30 days so that our residents can do online billing and have all the information that they need and click a button, basically. So right now, we've asked all the department heads to submit any kind of information, text that they want for their particular pages because they will all have their own pages. We've also extended that to the fire chief as well. Our residents need to know where they go for fire information also. So this is moving along and we'll, you know, keep you abreast of what's happening in the next two weeks at the next board meeting. Also, I attended on Friday our health insurance meeting. We belong to a pool called the IPBC and we're in a subpool called the EWBC, okay, with six other municipalities. We've gotten a basic pre-rate, you know, for our health insurance, for the PPO insurance, for Blue Cross Blue Shield, we're looking at a negative 8.5 increase. So that would be no increase for the first time probably ever. And the HMO is 3%. Now, this is only for non-union employees because I'm sure you know that the union employees have chosen to go another route. So I just wanted to report that that's where we're going, this subpool we've been in since 2010. I've been involved in this subpool since the start of it and the group since 2007. So I'm very familiar with handling the insurance and what goes on in this subpool for the non-union employees now. We've just added another, South Chicago Heights has now joined the subpool. It's the whole idea of this subpool is the more municipalities you have in it, it's a sharing type of, if you have catastrophic issues with different municipalities with claims, it gets shared through the whole group so that keeps the rates, you know, down. So when South Chicago Heights just joined, we voted them in on Friday, they were looking at over a 20% rate increase. So this group started out with a 15% rate increase and then has gone down to eight your second year and now you're at a negative 8.5. The hard numbers will come out in March where we have a final, a final number, but they're pretty, the IPBC and Gallagher, since we've been in this group, has been right on the money all along and everything that they said would happen has happened. So we've accumulated a reserve and we're gonna go from there. That's all I have. The other thing I have, I'm not sure, I received a memo from the mayors and managers, in case anybody is interested, we have the, they have the gambling bill is out there. I'll be attending a meeting at the Tinley Park Convention Center. They have a hearing on February 17th if anyone is interested. I just think it's important that we keep abreast of what's going on around our communities. And the reason why I want to attend this is because they are going to, they're going to possibly put in gambling terminals at Belmore Racetrack. And how that could potentially affect us down the road is, Belmore Racetrack would annex to the Village of Crete and they would provide water and all that. It would become a destination place. They would potentially build hotels and that could affect us in the future. The other thing I would like to, why I want to attend is, there's some issues with revenue sharing for the municipalities in the surrounding areas. How is this going to affect us? If we're, are we entitled to anything? So if anybody's interested as well, it will be Friday evening at 6:00 PM at the Tinley Park Convention Center.
It's this Friday evening?
The 17th, or, I'm sorry, Monday, Monday, the 17th. I've been following this for a long time as well. The other thing that I wanna see is what they're gonna do with the money. If, you know, Governor Quinn says he's not approving this unless a substantial amount of money is going into an education fund for the state because obviously there's huge issues with the education funds and pension funds in the state. And that's something else that, you know, they haven't made a, they say that they've come to an agreement with the pension dilemma that they have, but, you know, we have to watch that closely because there have been, there has been talk in the past that they would pass the pension issues on to the local school districts, which then in fact turns it on to the local residents if the school districts can't handle the amount they have to pay for pensions. So it's just something to watch for if anybody's interested. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, do you have anything to say?
I have nothing to report at this time.
Mr. Mulliver?
I have to go.
Come on. Everybody wants to talk to the money then.
Wasn't prepared to bring anything, I believe, last board meeting, said that I was gonna have budgetary information, no other things to discuss at that time, but currently we're getting started with the 2014-15 budget. So all the department heads and myself, I sent out my items for them to fill in and then we're gonna get together and discuss that next week. Also, the finance department, we're putting together a procedures manual, I believe, Trustee Gonzalez. We did discuss yesterday some procedures in regards to bill payments and things of that nature. We are, looks like we're going to continue on with the ACH, the PSC, and I do believe, we've been in talks with him as well regarding online payment, them also giving us some items that we thought we should get from them regarding terminals. But that's pretty much all I have until to the next board meeting, when I'll have a full package for the trustees as well and the board.
Any questions for Daryl? Okay, thank you. And by the way, if any of the trustees have any initiatives that they'd like to see take forth in this year through an existing department or something other than that, we need to make sure we identify the potential expenses for those as well as potential funding sources for those to make sure that we're doing everything we can to keep things at a zero net difference. You know, we don't wanna, we don't wanna go upside down at all to take forth any initiatives. We wanna make sure we're doing positive things without a negative impact. So if you have things that you think are gonna be relevant to a particular department, by all means, talk to the department head or at least talk to Daryl, it'll help you identify where that should be placed. Ruben?
Mr. Mayor, I'll be brief. A few announcements. We've scheduled some village officials, employees for first aid, CPR certification. Just as a reminder, Thursday, February 27th, that's from 8:00 to 4:00 here in the village boardroom, and then Saturday, March 8th as well. And it's also an eight-hour training from 8:00 to 4:00. We have applied for a grant and we did receive a grant for CERT training, that is Community Emergency Response Training. And that's where the Illinois Emergency Management Agency, in cooperation with the Will County EMA, will come out to Moni and put on a 20-hour training for the community. The training consists of fire safety, emergency field medical operations, there's also search and rescue, and several other training classes that they're gonna offer. It's a certification with testing, so there will be a test and a graduation. And Mr. Mayor, as I understand, you'll do the ceremony for us. But that's gonna be, we're in negotiations with the dates. Attentive dates are April 25th, 26th, and then May 3rd for those classes. We're still working out the final details, so a little premature announcing the class, but we do have a confirmation that we will be hosting the training. Also quickly, EMA, we will be starting our first training orientation meeting with our group, Moni EMA, that'll be February 27th, it's a Thursday. That'll be our official date. We're still waiting for the finalized version of our background checks, our medical review as well. All the interviews have been conducted, but we're getting ready to start that program. Finally, I just wanna touch briefly on our PAR program. We've launched February the 4th Karate for Kids. There was an age restriction, it was 10 and above. We had an outcry from many of our residents because of the age restriction. And so we have recruited a martial artist instructor and he will be able to reach our five to nine-year-olds. So he is right now in the middle of a background investigation and once we're through the background investigation, we'll put that information out to the public as well. He will be able to offer that as a program. And the last thing I wanna touch on is, and I know he's gonna be really uncomfortable as I mentioned it, but our chief, Chief Sipkar, doing an awesome job. He's teaching self-defense for women. It's an empowerment class. And just so you know, the statistics are amazing. It's every two minutes, there is a woman that's raped in the U.S. It's just the U.S. And only 37% of those rapes are even reported. So women are attacked all the time, not to mention violent crimes, domestic violence and so forth. So this class is geared towards empowering a woman, giving her a plan, a way out. And just having the knowledge and the understanding of what a woman is up against is phenomenal. My wife and my daughter, there's a DJ's wife's involved in this and great review. So I just wanna put a plug in. Chief, thank you. Awesome job. And that's my report. Thanks.
Thank you. Chief?
I can talk now.
Yeah.
It's, okay. Something that's become sort of inherent in my heart is that we need to be able to get people out for some things to volunteer with. And this weekend, we're having the Battle of the Badges Blood Drive. It's gonna be right here in this building, Saturday, 9:00 to 1:00. Anybody that comes in and says they're with Team MPD will have my undying gratitude. Anybody that signs with the Red Firefront people can go home. If they don't show up, in the instance that they do, we'll certainly accept their donations 'cause the blood drives are worthy. We're involved in the Law Enforcement Torch Run this year. We're gonna be starting out with the Polar plunges, which are coming up pretty quickly here on the 1st and 8th of March. We will be doing a cop on a rooftop at the Dunkin' Donuts in May. The day will get firmed up and I'll let you know when that is. We're also gonna be doing a leg of the Torch Run coming through Moni this year instead of around us. So, and we're gonna have runners. So of course, we're fundraising and as soon as we have the ability to put out the correct paperwork, we're certainly gonna start asking for money and donations and that kind of stuff. And we'd like to be a gold member, so we'd like to raise enough money to get up into that standard this year, even though it's our first. Ruben, thanks for the little pat on the back. I appreciate it. It's important for us to do these classes. You know, I taught this for years. This is my first opportunity to do it here and I welcome that when it was time to do that. So, you know, we're gonna try and do more than one class every year. Hopefully, we'll be able to do two or three. You know, it's time-consuming and I do have other responsibilities, but I wanna make myself available in as much as I can. Two, the law enforcement, real law enforcement side of the mouth. Occasionally, we have things happen, you know, that are sort of repeat offenders and one of those happens to be burglary to motor vehicles. In this case, it happened to be out in one of our industrial areas, but the common core thread with that is the cars are unlocked. And if the car is unlocked, you're asking to sort of be victimized. Now, granted, my detectives and my staff are wonderful people and we clear up darn near everything. And the two people that did do these burglaries have been arrested, they are in custody, they're waiting bond of $20,000, so unless a friend comes up with $2,000, they're not getting out until their next trial date. But please, folks, lock your cars if you're gonna leave them outside and don't leave anything inside them that looks like it might be valuable, even if you are locking it, because, you know, if it looks valuable, somebody will break a window to get into it. And I probably overtalked my time, so thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Pop? I know some of the adjustments that's been going on, probably haven't had a chance to maneuver the water rate increase concerns.
Yeah, I almost wish we'd taken off the agenda, no. I hope we.
We realize this.
I'll be sitting with DJ, I know he was getting into it, we'll see if we can resolve.
I know.
Yes, it's been out there a long now.
It's not the kind of thing you wanna do casually.
Yeah, we ran into some problems we didn't even know existed. It was a good thing we decided to do something about our water rate increase that hasn't been raised in about 15 years. We found out some things and it changed our attack mode, whatever you may wanna call it. I don't wanna call it attack, it sounds like we're in a order, but rate increase is our testy thing and we wanna be showing what we like and we're gonna do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Horn, I know the chief has been involved. Do you have anything else?
I don't have anything else to add.
Chief, you were working on coming up with a new schedule and I think you'd actually be like, so that's in the council.
Yes, sir. Trustee Horn, I spoke to him at the meeting, like two meetings ago, and attorney.
Trustee Horn, I spoke to him at the meeting, like, two meetings ago, and Attorney Chusky and I have done a conversation, he's been covering some other territories, so we will get back to it as quickly as possible.
Trustee Razik, review of employment practices related to the current CBA for, like, when we talked the other day, it looked like there's still some review, I'm going to talk to the chief who will then.
I'm going to have some next board meeting on that.
What's that?
Policy address, and I'm going to, for the next board meeting on that.
Okay. And you also have another item here, engine braking ordinance?
I submitted a draft ordinance along with the attorney, so we should have, hopefully the next board meeting.
Got something.
Have the final ordinance to put in place.
Wonderful. Okay. Any other officials who have, it's a, I missed one. Trustee Gonzalez.
First of all, I'm sorry, do I not remember, what is CBA?
It's just kind of longer, right on the whole. What do you call it?
And just the last thing, I know we talked about it the last meeting, and we're halfway through this year, it's two years to go, so I think that can come up there for a couple of months anyway, because I do want to talk to Daryl about it before we get into next budget cycle, because we'll have to redo some things, and the ordinance will have to be revised if somebody.
Sure.
And then can I just give somebody a pat on the back?
Absolutely.
And I too, I wanted to both compliment both Barb and Daryl for being so patient with me, and I know, looking over Barb's shoulder yesterday, and I know her only job was to sell me on a design, she did do that, and, but we all agreed to that as far as our website design, what we need to get onto one page, so the residents are able to see it, so she did a great job selling me on that, so thanks Barb. And then, Daryl, for being so patient with me, I know there's, I asked very specific questions, and we already addressed all of them, so thank you both.
And if I could give a pat on the back to Trustee Gonzalez, who gave up a day of regular employment and came in here and was meeting with a couple of department heads and was able to join in on the staff meeting as well, and I would invite any of the trustees, if they have opportunity, to contact either Barb or Ruben to identify when a staff meeting is going to occur, if you think you might be able, available to be in town to, to attend one of those. Obviously, because of open meetings, you can only have two officials at a meeting of that sort because of, you know, so if I had two trustees that wanted to be there, and I was planning on being there, I'll bow out in order to allow, you know, a couple trustees to be there, but there would be a maximum of two officials, voting officials that would be allowed to be at one of those meetings. But I do want to make sure the trustees have every opportunity possible to see the inner workings of the, the way the village is operating.
And I, and I've remained very quiet, did I not? I let them.
You're worried about others.
Do you have, are they scheduled regularly? Do you have a schedule for them?
They, they were the Tuesday before the board meeting, there's kind of a reassessment of the appropriateness of that, and it looks like they're probably going to be Thursday mornings, yeah, after the board meetings, that way, whatever's addressed here and follow-up to that, the department heads and all that can identify, what is the best method of approach to dealing with the expectations that is put forth by the policies that are established by the board as compared to the other way around, where is their meeting just to say, here's the agenda? And, you know what I'm saying, so it looks like there'll probably be either weekly or bi-weekly meetings that will take place. And just, just so you, I, I think I've already mentioned to you that in the absence of an administrator, what we have done is, we have Barb, who is the assistant administrator, also, I think my audience refer to as the office manager, is dealing with all the internal departments of the village, you know, finance, building, things of that sort, as well as all of her own responsibilities she has to deal with. She'll also be addressing things pertaining to insurance and some of the legal matters. Ruben, as a result of him being in the EVO situation, some people say I simulate crises and whatever the case may be, but in a crisis situation, EVO is actually the point person for public works, public safety, you know, police and all that sort of thing, so it seemed reasonable to create that environment there. So Ruben is actually addressing the external departments. It simplifies without overtaxing any one person internally, so it simplifies your point of contact as well. If you have questions or concerns, you can talk to any of the department heads, but if you're trying to identify the internal flow that I'm trying to use for right now, it is Barb for the internal departments, Ruben for the external departments. And, and that is not to minimize the quality of caliber of personnel we have all throughout the village, it's just to simplify the point of contact, so. Any other officials?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'm going to continue, in fact, if you want to put this on the agenda, you know, for official reports, to be, report on economic development issues.
I'd be delighted.
Yesterday, I attended the Global Transportation Council for the Will County Center of Economic Development meeting. Several things came out of that that are significant for this area, one of which is the two-tier, the Tier Two Public Hearing for Illinois for the Eliana will be held on February 19th at the 150 Training Facility, 19800 West Arsenal Road in Wilmington. That is the last meeting, and the, there was a meeting the day before in Lowell, Indiana. This is on the Tier Two Phase of the Eliana, it's anticipated to be completed by spring 2014, that's the two-tier phase, not the Eliana. But there's a number of things included in that three-hour meeting, including the budget for next year, $17 million, $800,000 for Phase One, $3 million for PEGI surveys, and $70 million for land acquisition. That's important to economic development, both for them and for the villagers in Moni. Also, with some comments on a new GLM RIS report that was just released on the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers study on Asian carp. Somebody might ask what that significance is, well, there's eight recommendations that came out of that survey by the federal government, three or four of which are to, in essence, shut down the industrial movement of boat traffic up and down the.
Canals.
Canals, shutting the canals down, future for industrial growth, and that would be a significant economic development issue. So it's something to pay attention to. The Global Transportation Council is also forming a Will County Freight Advisory Council, that will be, more information on that coming up shortly as well. Both the Will County Freight Advisory and the Global Transportation Councils are advisors, both on a Will County level, but also on a state level. I will be serving on that council moving forward, both from a personal business interest and, of course, since I'm a trustee, I'll certainly bring that information back as well.
And I do want to address, you know, there are benefits of having some of our officials that have a diverse background of work environments. Trustee Holson and I were talking about the Calumet Area Industrial Council, which doesn't quite come down this far, they're long established and they have a lot of good insight, but they do not allow municipalities to be a part of their program. But it doesn't mean that they won't allow us to be aware of the programs and stuff that they have on. So, you know, there are things like that, if you guys see things that you think are relevant to us, be it economic development, be it recreational, or whatever the case may be, you know, we need those points of contact, and by all means, let us know if you think that there is an area that you personally have an interest in, that would be suitable for the village to benefit from, obviously from our relationships with those organizations. And Trustee Olson, thank you for being a part of that. Any other officials? I have one last item before we go to old business, and that has to do with the retail conference that we had gotten a consensus for, it was back in November. And, you know, moving forward with that, Barb Ray has been in attendance at some of the meetings pertaining to that. The question I have for you is, in talking to the other municipalities, there's, Barb, what, seven or eight municipalities that are part of this co-op that are going?
Six or seven.
You can come up with it. By no means do I want any of our efforts to be contrived, that being an entourage of wasteful spending, going out to somewhere, you know, there's villages around here that they'll send, instead of going to IML in Chicago, they'll send them out to Seattle. Why out in other states? You know, we get good training in, in Chicago, why would we have to go to another state for some of that stuff? It doesn't make sense to me, especially when it tends to be perceived as an abuse, because it's just going out there to have fun is what it's perceived as. Now, we need to have a presence, we need to make ourselves visible, we need to build the relationships, we have to be in the right places for this to happen. You guys have already given us a consensus to move forward, but now the question comes in is, we need to know, who should we be sending to represent the village? And the question I have for you is, who do you recommend? I, the, the other municipalities are sending three, four, five, I think there's one that's sending six people to represent them. Typically, it's the mayor, the administrator, sometimes the trustees, sometimes somebody if they have that kind of a development person. I'm asking you for your input.
My input is, I am still dead set against this, I think we're getting ourselves ready, I don't think we're ready in light of what's happened in the last couple of months. We need to establish ourselves around here, I think we're setting ourselves, I think we need to start small in Chicago, and then, you know, next year, go out there with a band, I don't think we are ready, and that's.
Okay.
I was against it from the beginning, I'm still against it.
I understand. Okay. Well, we did get a consensus to move forward, so we have established the fact, we, we've committed to be a part of this co-op. That being the case, we want to make sure that our efforts, as we do put forth, are as effective as possible. Now, I'm not looking for a vacation, actually, that would be kind of nice without, but that's not the point. I'm looking to do the best that we can for our community to build those relationships, and, you know, I'm looking for recommendations. I think Barb is well-suited to represent us. You know, the recommendation most of communities, the mayor does go. I would think that it'd be suitable for at least one of our trustees to go. You know, I know that Trustee Holson has had a lot of experience in economic development, and has a lot of insight into that area, you know, and also I'm hearing all the recommendations. Trustee Horn, you've got some business background, Trustee goes out as well. You know, I'm looking for recommendations, you know, if we send two people out there, if we send three people out there, you've got to realize the number of hours, they're going to be on the show floor, if you will, we need to make sure we have a presence when people come by, but we also need to be able to have the presence necessary to leave the space to go have those meetings, to be able to schedule those meetings, so.
I could, Mayor.
Yeah.
Trustee Gonzalez, Trustee Gray, to your point, I don't think we're ready either, but we have to start somewhere. My concern would be that first step is to have a presence, to be there, be nice to have some marketing material.
Sure.
Economic development of this nature takes years, not a year or two. And sooner or later, we have to start as a village, and I have a broken record on this, but we have to have an economic development plan, we have to begin moving, and it would be nice if we had the plan before we start doing the trips. On the other hand, this particular opportunity is one where we're sharing the costs with other villages, which does mitigate the cost for us by going to a joint, a joint effort. Are we going to come back with new business? Not likely. Are we going to come back with people at least knowing that Moni is there? Yeah, for sure we would do that. I was at a meeting a couple, last month, I believe, when Senator Dick Urban spoke out about what's going on with the tax now that's on internet sales, and one of the points that he made was that as soon as this passes in the state of Illinois specifically, I don't want to mention it because we're on television, but there's a major mail order business that is interested in putting warehouses in Illinois as soon as this passes in Illinois, in this area. Those are the kinds of companies that are there, and those are the kind of companies that need to know that we have something. Now, again, it's not likely we're going to get a lot out of that meeting initially the first year, we probably will get more out of it next year if we have, by then, developed a better economic plan, and, which includes not just retail, not just industrial, but also residential, all that goes together. I think we have to be careful how much we spend, for sure, but I, I think it's probably a good idea to have a presence there and begin to look at, you know, how we can put together in, in terms of budgeting next year while we pushing hard for some type of economic development planning update since the 2004 major one that we did, we really need to look at how we're going to try to address. We have a lot of industrial property available right now in Moni, buildings that are actually standing empty, and some of them recently. And we have very little retail in Moni, there's been a lot of discussion during the electionals or campaign, issue about grocery stores, these are the type of things that need to be addressed on a level more than just a village hall meeting, we have to start going out and reaching out for companies that will do those kinds of things. I think we have to be proactive and move forward, whether we feel we have all our ducks at work or not, so I'd like to see yourself, I, I've heard you, rumor has it that you can talk pretty good. Barb Ray, and if Holson, Dave Holston was available, I, I could see you guys being a good team to go out there. And I, you know, and I know from addressing the, the audience, there's villages very close to us that, like you said, at the drop of a hat, they'll send five, six, seven people out to Portland or Las Vegas or for every local conference. I think we're very frugal, as you can just see through the discussion with the John Muir tractors and, and, you know, trying to make account for every dollar that we spend. So the point is that I, I think we're, we are frugal, we do try to be frugal, and, but, but we need to move forward.
So I guess at this point, it wasn't on the agenda specifically, but I know it was getting time where we need to readdress this moving forward for scheduling purposes. I don't know if it, does officially need a vote per se, if it's within the.
I would recommend it if money's being a personal.
Sure.
I see that maybe, and I understand decisions have to be made, but that is, this is the second time it's not been on the agenda?
It can be on the agenda for this.
Exactly, so I think that we don't say anything about any money until it's on the agenda and we have a proposal in front of us on how much it's going to cost the village.
Very nice, great. Very reasonable. Barb, can you have something that identifies the estimated cost?
I'll have to the next board meeting.
All right. On our old business, we have color sales tax rebate request, and we're going to defer clerk's office to identify, have we received, I know there's been dialogue between clerk, deputy clerk with holders, have we received everything requested at this point?
I have seen nothing, it's gone through the deputy clerk.
That's right. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
There is a copy of a letter in our package from former Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Regarding this, where he provided us the list of employees who work in Moni, have Lee Wald's trustees have that?
That is correct, however, that did not line up with the request requirements by the agreement. The agreement, if I recall correctly, stipulated, do you have a copy of that?
Yes, sir, I believe.
You're supposed to provide a copy of the sales tax submissions, as well as a complete roster of their employees, identifying which ones are Moni employees and which ones were not. We did get an updated list that showed the roster of employees. We did get an updated list that showed the roster of employees. A third of their employees do live in Moni, or Moni address, I should say. I recognize one of them is just, you know, outside of town still. Um, but to validate the monies that they're saying are relevantly due to them, we have to confirm that according to the sales tax submission form that they were used. We can't just issue them a check regardless until we confirm that they've actually made a payment in the sales tax on a certain dollar amount for us to do a reimbursement.
I believe that was provided in the last meeting, wasn't it?
I don't think the sales tax was. I didn't, I didn't.
Okay, I thought we had that in the last meeting.
Now, there's a copy of the contract, or the agreement, if you will, that was provided to you all. Go ahead, Laura.
Uh, yes, sir, they're supposed to provide us, with the power of attorney, giving us the information from the state where they sent it for sales tax, because our numbers are based on what they generated. I would caution the, the ourselves, though, that information they give us is proprietary.
Correct.
But once we get that, that's, that's confidential, because it's sales tax information. But whether they submitted that to us, I'm not, if they haven't, it should be fairly easy for them to do it, or we can get to the state possibly, because they're supposed to sign the limit of the power of attorney, where we do get the information for sales tax purposes, and that they should have it. But it is proprietary, so once we get it, it's got to be...
Yeah, it was given to us on a proprietary basis, I believe.
It was confidential form.
Yeah, there was a confidential form, we had it back in the last month.
With the sales tax information?
Yes, sir. Well, I don't know if you had your, oh, I'll move it for a minute.
Well...
I thought the nature of what we had left in the last meeting was what...
Well, you have a copy of it in your package.
The confidential nature was what we were going to reimburse, that's all that I saw.
We got it right here, hold on. Let that question...
Mayor, approach the bench there. Approach the bench, I see.
Copy the agreement, and there's not the sales tax, it'd be the...
It'll come from Department of Revenue, and it'll show exactly what...
So, sales tax...
I don't think we'll have that through, but it's not the one that we're meant to, that we have.
No, this page here was supposed to be confidential.
Okay.
And the employee list was...
Good.
And just, and according to that agreement, they're supposed to be in correspondence with the clerk's office, and the clerk's office specifically has not received, either clerk or the deputy clerk has not received. Um, they didn't receive the employee list, but not the sales, and I know you had submitted a request for the additional information.
So we have reached out to them?
We have. I, I personally, knowing there's a little bit of transition, hand-delivered them a copy of the agreement to remind the manager there that we didn't want to lose continuity on that, and, uh, they did follow up, uh, Katie did follow up with Michelle. But we have to receive that, nor have we received the power of attorney.
If I may to, representing our villages with large retail bases, uh, lately, it appears as though the state's sometimes a little behind, I guess, giving out that information. So it's probably not called this fault, but believe me, we had one for twenty-two years, uh, a very large retailer, two of them, the other villages I work with, all of a sudden the state cannot find the form. After twenty years, twenty-two years of payment, we're talking over a million dollars a year on sales tax, and all of a sudden they can't find it. So this is not unusual, so Congress will be very, should be very helpful to get it for us.
Sure.
Do we need to make a motion to continue to table this, then?
Uh, yes, we can't take action on it tonight. For Congress's sake, it's ours, don't get any...
Yeah, it, it's not prepared at this point, it's on there for old business until it's cleared up. So, tabling is not necessary because it's not prepared for doing anything else.
Sure.
But as a point of clarification, I do hope you guys take the time, I know that there was a copy of the agreement, uh, submitted to the current board last official meeting. Um, it's, it's a difficult situation when you have an agreement that's not entirely adhered to on certain parts of it, that are now in the past, as to how the board feels the relevance to move forward on it. So by the time this is presented with all the correct information, provided they do provide us that information, at the time in which they're prepared to address the payout, the board should have had some time to digest their concerns and options pertaining to, um, what to do about the non-compliance portion of the agreement. And Larry, I don't know if you have any recommendations for them, whether they're private or, never you're...
At this point, I don't know. Now, I would just point out to the board that that same clause is, is in other agreements, we need to make sure we're consistent in enforcing that. There's a couple other requests out there that are the same, of the same nature.
Agreed.
And, and this is another, you know, as my old boss would always say, an opportunity for learning, um, going forward when we're working on our economic development, that if we do have such agreements that we have either in ordinance or on our lovely new website, Bringing to Business to Moni, and something stating what, if those agreements are going to be, that we police ourselves and make sure in a timely manner that we are doing our job in getting the information from the law.
Well, and, and just to clarify on our part, the agreement states that they're supposed to provide that information to the clerk, and we have gone out of our way to make sure personnel have gotten involved and everything else, and to make sure they understand that it needs to go to the clerk's office, and if they were sending it to someone, which they weren't in this entirety, so they're efficient in that regard, but there, again, as the attorney trustee indicated, um, I'm sure it's not for lack of willingness, it's sometimes just getting to write paperwork for, they may not have had an agreement like this, they had to do it before either, they've only got three locations. So Bourbon A or Crete may not have had an agreement like this, that they had to initiate the request on their part with, you know, formulas that, once we get through the first process on that, I'm sure we'll understand the drill and how it works, and...
But this is the same thing we're requesting of all other people that are asking for the same thing.
Similar, similar. Going forward, it'll be similar, not everything in the past was done this way. This one is, Larry, I believe this is the first time it's ever been drafted that way.
Yes, sir.
And, but it seems to be more relevant, because we're trying to promote local jobs, we're trying to promote using our local businesses.
Sure.
And the more we can do that as compared to just saying, oh, here, you, you want some extra money? You know, I mean, we, we can't just throw money at, at businesses that want us to invest in their business, then there's no return for our community. So that's the reason why it was settled upon the way it was. But to your point, whether that was the first, or whatever the case may be, it establishes a precedence how we handle compliance with the full agreement or not. That's something you guys need to learn. Okay, uh, Bailey Ridge.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe we received a request last board meeting pertaining to a payout to Bailey Ridge 431 LLC. I was asked to verify that the taxes on that property were paid in full, uh, they have been. The amount of the payout, again, this is a TIF payout, so it's not general obligation funds, is five hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and forty-five cents. This money pursuant to their request will be wire transferred to Chicago Title. Uh, Chicago Title will then make disbursements to certain note holders. Uh, this has been done before in the past, uh, they are current with the tax bill, they have complied, as far as I can determine, with the relevant provisions of the redevelopment agreement. Therefore, they are asking reimbursement, the amount of five hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and forty-five cents to Chicago Title.
I move that we accept this number.
Okay. Holston?
Agree.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Hop?
Yes.
Gracy?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
And Holston?
Good. Anything on our new business? Okay. Uh, open to the public, non-agenda items. Please allow your comments to three minutes, come to the podium, give your name, address, it's always be nice. Any comments, any takers?
Glad I greeted with a smile. Dorothy Margrave, 27253 South Timberline in Moni, not in Village of Moni, but just outside. I'm speaking as a representative of WPAL, the cable station. First of all, we'd like to thank all of the trustees and the mayor for the wonderful cooperation we get, WPAL gets, which allows us to put on the air programs and meetings that pertain to Moni. We feel this is very important, and those of us who volunteer are, consider the role of the citizen in knowing what's going on in his community is very, very important. I would like to thank, we've been looking for volunteers for a long time, and volunteers are very, very hard to come by, even though they play a very important role. Tonight, Rhonda Thompson, a former trustee, and her husband, Mike Thompson, are being, are volunteering to record this meeting, and they are, they are maybe, uh, recording the meetings in the future, but we still need volunteers, because there's no guarantee that, uh, since nobody is paid, that everyone has to make their schedule to be volunteering at that end. Secondly, I'd like to remind people that WPAL, uh, the meetings for the major Piattone and Moni appear on Comcast Channel Four, and those who do not have Comcast can see it on YouTube. If you go to Facebook, you can put in WPAL TV, and it will tell you many, many things about the village. There's many things, uh, going on in addition to the village's meetings, or I should say, things in the area. Uh, WPAL puts on, uh, government programs. Mike Margrave runs WPAL, and he's, wants to make sure that people are aware of what's going on, so he not only puts on Moni's meetings, but he puts on the, the two other townships and W, uh, and Moni Township, Moni Township and several other townships in the area. But all of the people who live in Moni, in the Village of Moni are also in the township. The township has its own government. They meet on the third Thursday of the month. WPAL records those meetings. Uh, if you're not familiar with the, what the township does, they are the people who are the assessors, they have a food pantry, they provide transportation to, uh, elders and disabled who have no transportation to go to doctors, and they do that in, in connection with another township. They have programs for seniors. Everyone should be familiar with what the, what Moni Township does, because they also do a very good job. Moni Township covers a very wide area, including Governor's State University, parts of Park Forest, and University Park. And, uh, again, I'd like to thank you as a representative of WPAL for all the good work you do. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mayor, before we close that section, I probably should have mentioned it, uh, under something else, but, uh...
I don't have a category for the weekend.
Right, I do. Our streets, we have some very serious potholes. I mean, if people don't slow down, you'll be buying a new tire and a rim. That's a few hundred dollars, I wanted to mention that. DJ and his crew are, are patching as they can, but you have to understand, one frost causes the patch to pop again, and if they have to plow, you know what's going to happen to that patch, so it's like we're wasting money, but we're not. We're trying to help the people in the community, and we will continue to do that when, as the warmer weather comes, but rest assured that with the severity of this winter, we're going to have more potholes than we've ever had for years. So please, drive slower, avoid the potholes, the community is working on it, period. Thank you very much. I think it's important, there's some bad ones out there.
There were some, some...
What's that?
I said, I want to put in some, something else.
I wanted to mention that, but it's good.
Anybody else from the public? Okay. At this time, I believe, uh, we have a couple items to address under executive session, but I don't believe there will be any, uh, action required from those.
Uh, there may be, I don't know.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right, so I'll entertain motion to go into executive session. Time is now eight eighteen. Second. Gonzalez, or is it? Roll call, please.
Trustee Hop?
Yes.
Gracy?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Michelle, which was?
No, you have to stay here. You can have it, I just have to control you. It's not still running, you don't need to...
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Gracy?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Gracy, can we...
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Hop?
Yes.
Gracy?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, have a good night.